Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the November twentieth meeting of the Pender County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, we would have Commissioner Grove say our invocation and Commissioner George to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Lord, as we come to you tonight, Lord, to do your business. I pray, God, that we could do it, Lord, without prejudice, Lord, without feelings, without hurt. Lord, put you first and do the county business in Jesus's name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any veterans in the house? Please stand and be recognized. At this time, do we have a motion for the adoption of our agenda?
Madam Chair, make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor? Moving on to public information. Our first order of business, do we have Desmond Jordan in the house? Please come forward, sir.
I'm going to do a proclamation honoring Desmond Jordan. A resolution of the Pender County Board of Commissioners honoring Desmond Jordan on the occasion of his winning first place at the United States Powerlifting Association World Championship. Whereas Desmond Jordan is a resident of Pender County, North Carolina, and whereas Desmond Jordan recently won first place at the United States Powerlifting Association World Championship in Coventry, England, deadlifting over eight hundred pounds, and whereas Desmond Jordan is the founder of House of Gains in Burghall, North Carolina, a weightlifting facility where he trains and helps other athletes, and whereas Desmond Jordan is an inspiration to all Pender County residents having overcome adversity to achieve world champion status and with a passion for inspiring others in the community, particularly children, to achieve their full potential. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Pender County, North Carolina, that the Board of Commissioners of Pender County honor and celebrate Desmond Jordan's achievement of first place at the United States Powerlifting Association World Championship, and the Board of Commissioners of Pender County expresses its deepest appreciation to Desmond Jordan for being an inspiration to other residents of Pender County, particularly the young athletes that he coaches and mentors. Upon execution by the officers of the county, clerk, to the board shall transmit a copy of this resolution, Desmond Jordan, adopted by the Pender County Board of Commissioners on this day, the twentieth of November, twenty twenty-third.
Please step to the podium and tell us a little bit about yourself and how you came to this big win.
My name is Desmond Jordan. I'm from Rocky Point, North Carolina, born and raised, and powerlifting came about because I got in a truck accident about seven years ago, and my right arm was completely smashed, and the doctor told me that I was done lifting heavy and I would never lift heavy again, and so that's when I started powerlifting, reprinted my own, and then just progressed into this right here.
Well, Ms. Cheryl Highsmith, at our last meeting, made us aware of your win and your impressive achievement, and so we wanted to honor you with this. We're going to sign it. I'm going to ask that it be reprinted so that we can put it on one page suitable for framing, and we will get this to you, Mr. Jordan. So, it's a pleasure meeting you.
It's a pleasure meeting you all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we have a picture? Do you have family here with you? Okay, bring them. Bring them all.
Mom, Dad, brothers, sisters.
Bring the girls.
Are you?
How you doing?
Good.
Are you seeing Michael Jordan?
Yes.
My cousin?
Yeah.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Very impressive.
Congratulations.
Now, the feel-good portion of this meeting is over.
The next part to feel good.
You got the next item, Ms. Cobb. Take it away.
I want to present the communications plan for Pender County. So, the first part is the mission. The purpose of the Pender County Communications Department is to serve as a credible source of information by supporting the county's mission and to tell the county's story in a timely manner by working with county officials, county departments, and community groups. Communication Department manages external affairs for the county, including media relations, social media, and assisting web services, content creation, branding, and marketing. Goals and deliverables. Increase social media presence. Get acquainted with our audience and determine what information is important to them by posting various and timely, relevant content, paying close attention to topics that the audience is most responsive to, create content for the audience that's engaging, and create content that's interactive, such as many surveys and open-ended questions, in addition to the other content that we're posting. Monitor the performance of all the channels with metrics and quality to ensure compliance with the brand. Continue website project and develop strategy. When the website project begins, manage the design, also when the website project begins, launches, I'm sorry, assist departments when needed with training and different content pieces they may need. Create content for the website, create a style guide for the project manager to use as a guide for the website, so this is something we will have to send to the software developer when we start. Develop the best practices for managing the county website, so obviously no posting anything crazy on the different pages, just keep it consistent throughout.
Will it be more user-friendly?
It will be so much more user-friendly, yes. Enjoy coming to our website. Yeah. Branding. Create a branding and style kit to ensure consistent managing across all forms of engagement, such as social media, any sort of print things that we're putting out there. Create a media kit for outside organizations to use, like if a newspaper comes to us and they want to use our logo, then we can share that with them, just with a kit that they can use and not have to, like, always ask me or someone in the organization. The style guide will include the history of the logo and the seal, a palette of colors and topography, a set of imagery, guidelines, and directions of when to use it. The guidelines will be updated as Pender County evolves and grows and increase e-communications. We will create a monthly newsletter for, I said website subscribers, but you'll have to go to the website to get that subscription, so that's the only reason why I say website subscribers. There's no website subscription. Work on a direct mail campaign for various departments. Create a state of the county or annual report. Celebrate partnerships. Reflect on accomplishments of the previous year and outline the county's future goals, both in print and e-communication. With a new website application, look in different texting applications to use with the department to keep residents informed of what's happening in Pender County. So, there's an option to use this, text people when we have a newsletter out, or if we have some important communication that they're not expecting, just say, hey, look out for this in your realm. Community relations. Attend county meetings, such as this meeting. Attend networking events, like chambers of commerce, expos, after-hours. Attend local festivals and events when available. Donate time and assist to local charities. Join county marketing associations, such as three CMA. Become a more effective county communicator and share with others what great things we're doing here in Pender County. Speak at events, local schools, and share with people what we're doing here in Pender County. Media relations. Maintain an updated media list. Provide consistent, proactive news releases and public service announcements to achieve accurate coverage. Monitor media by staying up-to-date in local media topics and coverage. Provide media and photo opportunity alerts for newsworthy events to stay top of mind with media and share photos if they cannot attend an event. And do you have any comments or questions?
Any comments, questions? When do you anticipate kicking off the website project?
Next night. So, we've already issued a RFP to our, to some websites.
Designers.
Designers, yeah. So, the proposal, well, the software companies. So, the proposals are due on November twenty-seventh. We will have demos the fourth through the eighth of December, and we will present to you at the January second board meeting. From there, we hope to get started right away and get a project manager, a project kickoff meeting, and that usually takes about two, three weeks, so from there, these weeks, these dates were given to us by all the vendors as sort of the timelines that we can expect things. Now, it can be shortened slightly, but not by much, but this is sort of the outline they've given to us.
Okay.
So, soon, yeah, very excited about it.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
You did the groundwork. Thanks. All right. Five point three, Mr. Van, Focus Broadband Pender County update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. For those in the audience who are at home who don't know me, I'm Alan Van, Assistant Manager with Pender County. I'm presenting on behalf of Chris Ward with Focus Broadband today to provide an update. He's the Director of Business Development with Focus Broadband. He actually sent me a written response and asked for me to share this with the group to try to be as insightful as possible to this moment in time. He also sent this map. If everyone's able to see that, he has it color-coded, and this is the latest and greatest as far as telling the different service areas with the different projects, anticipated, you know, complete, I think it has, no, it does not have completion, I'm sorry, but it does indicate the projects that are underway and what may be coming sooner, what may be already under construction, where you already have service available, and that sort of thing. So, going with what Mr. Ward said, he said that service is currently available to over twenty-three-hundred-and-seventy-one addresses in Canetuck, Holly Shelter, Grady, and portions of Caswell. This number was sixteen-hundred in October at the Commissioners' Meeting Update, which, again, in October, which means we have added service to over seven-hundred addresses since the first of October. He said to please communicate with the citizens that it's essential to understand that the Reconnect broadband grant project is jointly funded by the USDA and Focus Broadband, and Pender County has no direct control over this federal initiative. Then he went on to say the majority of the four-twenty-one corridor falls within a set of contracts currently under review by the USDA. He says we regularly reach out to the USDA through phone calls and emails, and we also correspond with the state USDA representative to obtain updates. Unfortunately, this process is not something that can be expedited, and we are entirely dependent on the USDA's timeline. Once the USDA approves the contracts, we can begin to initiate the construction project to begin working in the area. Per the Reconnect guidelines, we have five years to complete the project, which is primarily due to the complexities of dealing with federal agencies like the USDA. The USDA is responsible for administering significant broadband grant funding alongside its other programs, which results in an extensive workload. He says as far as updates for specific areas, please inform the public to direct their inquiries about the project to Focus Broadband. He's provided a website link, and I'll call that out to you. It's also on this slide that's before you hear. The website link is www.getfocusbroadband.com/pendercounty. You can go to this site directly, or you can access it through a link on Pender County's home website page. Simply click the Focus Broadband button in order to do so. Once you're into the Focus Broadband page, use this website to enter address information to check on the status of construction. Residents can also enter their contact information, so we will be able to call them once service is available in their area. In addition, they can call, and the number's up here, eight-three-three-nine-eight-one-four-one-five-two for project updates to check on the status, or they can also call nine-one-zero-seven-five-five-sixteen-ninety-seven, which is Chris Ward's office, if you happen to have any unique situations that need some sort of clarification. And that was the update from Chris.
We have an office in Burghall. I thought, across four counties, electors have an office there?
Yes, sir.
So, they're opening up pretty soon, yes.
Yes, sir. I'm not sure of the completion, though, as far as anticipated date for that.
And they had quite a number of jobs that they were trying to fill at Focus Broadband as well, so remind our citizens of that opportunity. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Van. Appreciate it. Five point four, Mr. White, you're up. Park projects update.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair and members of the board, Jared Cass and I want to provide a quick update on the status of the Pender Lee Community Park restroom and picnic shelter facility, as well as Central Pender Park on one-seventeen. So, first up, so for the Pender Lee Community Park picnic shelter and restroom project, we held the kickoff meeting with the contractor on August the fifteenth. The contractor has since installed the construction fencing and has got the trusses delivered. You can see those on the left-hand or the right-hand side of the fencing. What Jared said with the contract today, the rebar package has been ordered, and they anticipate putting the rebar and the concrete in starting on Monday, November.
We picked up today, and they're just starting Monday.
So, Monday, the twenty-seventh, and right now, we're still on the anticipated completion for February of twenty-four for that project.
Are those steel trusses?
Wood.
Wooden?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
How long will they be on the ground?
Hopefully not long. Hey, get them covered and protected.
So, on Central Pender Park, Phase One, this is the park on Highway one-seventeen. So, the kickoff meeting for that project was held on October the twenty-fourth. Our contractor is Pond and Company. They have, the final site design is due to us on February of twenty-four. They have some deliverables that are due to us next week, preliminary design, and then our construction documents will be one-hundred complete, one-hundred percent complete by October, or August of twenty-four, and the final completion will be October of twenty-twenty-five.
So, I'm assuming when the final site design is completed, you'll be making a presentation?
Yes, ma'am. And that's when we'll be going out to bid.
We found out the end of last week that the concept plan and cost estimate, we're hoping to have by twelve-twenty-one, so hopefully in January, we'll be able to have some before you.
Before the site design?
Yes.
Of Central Pender?
Yes. So, we will keep everyone updated on that.
There's a moving utility poles out there on our property. Is that called the construction for the park?
No, we were out on the site, I believe, two weeks ago, and I think four counties just upgrading the poles to look like steel poles, but we haven't, our contractor hasn't done that. But this is the current conceptual plan that we have. The engineers are still working through some of the feasibility pieces of it, so we'll provide the board with an update of the site plan once they kind of work with it a little bit. And this is just the estimated project timeline again. Final completion will be October of twenty-five, and yep, so we'll keep you updated as we work through it, and we'll have, as Jared said, within the next few weeks, the contract will start providing deliverables to us.
And how many fields will we have in Pender Central?
So, Phase One includes four multipurpose fields, one picnic shelter, playground, and one concession stand slash restroom, similar to what we have at Pender Memorial Park now.
So, Pender Memorial Park has how many fields?
So, right now, we have, we call it a total of three, but acreage-wise, we're looking at only about two of what we'll have at Central Pender. And then we have four or five baseball softball fields. So, Phase Two of Central Pender Park will include five additional baseball soccer field, softball fields.
Okay. So, this, Pender Central originally began as an expansion or replacement of the Pender Memorial Park?
Yes, ma'am. That's what started it, and then due to the adjacent land, having trouble with that, the determination was to move out to one-seventeen. Pender Memorial Park will still be there. So Phase Two of Central Pender Park will include five additional baseball soccer field, softball fields.
So this, Pender Central originally began as an expansion or replacement of the Pender Memorial Park?
Yes, ma'am, that's what started it and then due to the adjacent land, having, having trouble with that, the determination was to move out to one-seventeen. Pender Memorial Park will still be there. But, yeah, but this is kind of the expansion piece of it, so, yep. Any other questions?
So we're going to maintain Pender Memorial and Pender Central. What's Pender Central has been completed?
That, that's my understanding of that.
That might be a good idea, item for possession and so forth. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Adams, five point five, status of DOT study on Malpass Corner.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Commissioner Groves made a comment at the last meeting about the dangers of the intersection of four-twenty-one and Malpass Corner Road. I believe there'd been a fatal crash just before that meeting. After that meeting, I reached out to the Department of Transportation to see if they were conducting further analysis of that intersection because it's been about a year since they installed those flashers on the stop signs. They are, they responded back and said they are conducting further analysis. It's, say, under review at this time. They don't have any concrete information to share with the board because the analysis is ongoing. But they did notify me that they would keep me in the loop as, as some of those recommendations are forthcoming, so. I'm sorry.
Do they have any data as to whether in the past year that traffic line has reduced the number of accidents? Or the severity of the accident? Is there any information that they can give us or could we obtain that from EMS possibly?
They're collecting that data right now. That's, that was their response, was that they wanted to have a year and a year and a half's worth of data before, you know, making any suggestion for roadway.
I'm sure I like helping, so I mean, it's not a total solution, but it is helping to give people warning that intersection there.
Sure, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, five point six, Mr. Cohn, update on four-twenty-one water system expansion.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, so I'm happy to inform that we're doing some progress on this project. It started last Monday, Monday the thirteenth, I contacted High Field Engineering and I looked at the hydraulic study that was done in the area. And I have verification that the Malpass water tank is capable to maintain pressure and volume of water in the event that we are to tie in four-twenty-one into Highway eleven extending up to the Sampson County county line. So on Thursday, November the sixteenth, I received confirmation from the operator responsible in charge of the town of Harrell, who indicated that in fact they do have a three-inch water line adjacent to our county line. Next week, I'm intending to visit this area and meet with the operator and identify exactly where is this line located. I believe it is quite very close because in fact, the last individual that lived in the Pender County line do have water and they're receiving water from that line. So we will investigate how is this connection happening and it's a good place where we can start an interconnection with the town of Harrell. And they seem to be motivated about it. Then on Friday, November the seventeenth, I met with CDM Smith Engineering Firm and they received confirmation from the Division of Environmental Quality that Pender County will be eligible to apply for the upcoming Community Development Block grant. This is free money that is coming up. We should have the application turned in sometime around the spring of twenty-twenty-four to expect any funding after the beginning of twenty-twenty-five. Talking to Mr. Carson Smith, he expects to see some type of paperwork coming in so that he can back us up in this project so that we can acquire this money.
In the next budget season, our state representative is waiting for us to give him a cost estimate
That is correct.
For this project.
That is correct. Yeah, yes, ma'am, that is very correct. Also, it was informed to me, I had a meeting with CDM Smith today concerning the membrane plant on Highway seventeen on the east side of our county, that there are some monies they are now becoming available to offer from that project that it was allocated for distribution lines. Well, originally the plant was meant to be in the upper area of Seedberry Road and now we have relocated the plant closer to two-ten.
Well, why couldn't we use that funding for distribution lines on the west side?
Yes, let me finish. Here's where I go with that. So, so what is happening is that now there is five thousand two hundred and eighty-three feet of water line that we can ask CDM Smith to go ahead and design and install and it'll be part of the project. It's part of the umbrella of the project and they say to us that we can do that anywhere in the county. Now remember that this money will have to be paid back. So I'm putting this in priorities. I do have guarantee of this money and as long as we're still in this project, we can always access that. But I would like to see first what we can do with the CDVG money and the application to try to get that grant money for free. Now, once I contact Harrell, the town of Harrell, and we see how far are we from, from the interconnection? It could be a possibility to the yes, we can start bringing in water from that end utilizing that money if the board approve. That's something that I will have to bring up to you guys for approval. But at this moment, all I have is facts. I want to go ahead and go out there and put my eyes on what I got going on in the field before I can come to you and make a decision on how we want to go.
And, and how far that five hundred and twenty-eight feet of water line that was already funded will take us to?
It, it, it will address at least the first twenty-five customers.
You'd even need at least a six-inch line, Harrell's, would you? Six-inch water line?
Uh, so, when, uh, Mr. McPoy, when, when you look at a water system, you always want your beers lined in the inside of the system and they're reducing themselves as they're going towards the end of the line. Uh, yes, we would like to have a six-inch so that we can have fire protection. Uh, but if we want to go ahead and proceed right away and begin bringing water, you want the smallest line at the end, so it'll be a three-inch so there'll be enough pressure as we go on three-inch, four-inch, six-inch, eight-inch, in that, in that fashion. But yes, I do, I do plan on designing for fire protection on, on that area of the county.
And, and Harrell's, or as we around here refer to it as Harrell Store, if, if Harrell's, if, if we do a partnership with Harrell's, we would essentially be their customer. Pender County would be a customer and pay Harrell's for the usage of water but allocated to us. But it would save us money from having to put down a deep well or, or right now run the line from Malpass Corner to that end of Harrell's, which we plan to eventually do anyway.
That is one-hundred percent correct, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Um, Agkerson is also, uh, has water that they would like to sell, so?
And I understand that, ma'am. Um, um, forgive me, but I'm going in order of priorities and something that I can tangibly grab on right now.
But I was just making that analogy as to we would be Harrell's customer just as if we had water that we had allocated from Agkerson's water supply.
Yes, ma'am.
Customers. All right, that's great news.
Any questions?
Really, really good news.
Thank you.
Yes, we're working on both the, the funding and the engineering, so that's great. Look forward to your December four report, Mr. Cohn, Director. All right, um, um, Mr. Thurman, yes?
I am very, I am very sorry. I didn't mean to do that, but if, if you mind, I would like to take a moment, try and, will you come over here for a second? I, I want to introduce the board and, and, and I'm, I'm going to be doing this as we go on in my, in my career with the county. This is Brian Terry. He is our new Water and Sewer Superintendent. He is in charge of all the operators that are out in the field doing their work. He comes to us from Onslow County Water and Sewer Authority. His forte is water quality. And he's going to be helping us out in bringing our water system and our operators up to standard so that we can be competitive with our neighbors.
I'm just glad to be here in Pender County, so I'm looking to serve all the customers throughout the county, so.
Glad to have you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Turner, do we have public comment for agenda items?
No, ma'am, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I'd like to motion approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Approvals and resolutions. Sheriff Cutler, approval for purchase order and requesting county funds for Carolina recording systems of one hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Commissioner. It is a requirement that all radio and telephone transmissions are recorded in the nine-one-one center. This recorder does record all radio and telephone transmissions for the nine-one-one center. The quote for the refresh on the recorder was, was received in July twenty-twenty-three and sent to the nine-one-one board for eligibility. Pender County Sheriff's Office has received it back and one hundred and fourteen thousand and thirty dollars of the one hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars is reimbursable from the nine-one-one board. That is a difference of seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-five. The Pender County Sheriff's Office is asking for the funds from the general fund to cover the cost and being reimbursed when the expenditure report is completed.
When do we anticipate this funds to come in?
I don't know that.
Will it be before the next budget's year?
I certainly hope so.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
She says yes. The money lady says yes.
And this, and this, this would have been requested in this past budget, but we did not receive the quote back prior to that process.
So this was not included in your budget for this year?
That is correct.
It will be reimbursed, count it.
All but seven, that's correct. Seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-five.
But we've been working on this project and getting all the radios, EMS, and fire and emergency services aligned to a new system.
We are working on that.
A long time.
Yes, ma'am, but this just pertains to the nine-one-one center recorder.
All right.
Yeah, the, uh, there was a new radio system implemented back in twenty-twenty-one, but there was a workaround fix for the recorder to try to push that cost down the road a little bit, but we are up on that now to where we, we, we are going to have to replace that recorder.
And that's where we will receive calls from the citizens to disperse after law enforcement and fire and EMS.
Absolutely. Telephone calls and radio transmissions are recorded.
Support our citizens. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I wish to approve the request for one hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to be reimbursed in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand thirty dollars for the nine-one-one board recorder.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Al, you did it. All right, eight point two, approval of purchase order and what is BOA? Road and drainage repairs within Pender Commerce Park.
Evening, Board. I'm here tonight to-
Budget amendment.
Do I have my, uh, hour point?
You were supposed to bring that.
I guess he doesn't have it, Board. I have some nice pictures for you. But we don't have it here, I guess. This is my first presentation. I didn't realize I had to send it to IT on top of putting it in the package. Um, so you'll have to follow along in your package. Here this evening to ask for approval of a, of a PL and BOA in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to the RJ Norris Construction Company for needed road repairs on Acme Way and Corporate Drive and Pender Park, Pender Commerce Park. On May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, Pender County, B O C C approved resolution to declare Corporate Drive and Acme Way public roads. On my next slide, it would show that the Department of Transportation from North Carolina did a field study for us on what it would take for them to assume control and maintenance of the roads. After that, we got the board's approval to continue to move forward with the process. We put it out, an RFP out, had to extend it, still didn't get any responses. After that, we, after making multiple pleas to multiple companies, we were able to get one company, Mr. Norris, to, to bid on it. He's done work for the county before, so we feel comfortable that he'll be able to handle the project and that it is a fair price.
How do we know it's a fair price when everybody else has bid on it? Was this, did, did you get any feedback as to why other companies were not?
I, I believe the project's not large enough for the large companies and there's, there's a lot of little things where some can do some and some can't do it all, but to find somebody that could handle a smaller scale road project, um, not worth it for the big guys who could do it and out of reach for some of the small guys.
Well, if we had to go around begging for bids, I'm sure it's- I'm sorry.
So we own the roads and there are responsibilities to take care of them. Inside the, the package, there's a few pictures showing where the road is washing out in some places and a lot of the drainage issues. So we feel that it needs to be done. This, this, this needs to be done regardless to bring the roads up to standard. But if we do do it, we can then continue with the application and the process to get DOT to take over them and it'll be their responsibility to maintain them going forward.
Mr. Vaneger, would turning these roads over to DOT have any correlation to the time when Pender County is no longer the largest holder of property in the Commerce Park? Does that one thing have to do with the other?
I, I don't, I don't think they do. One's with your covenants and this turning over the roads is independent of that. The good part, as you mentioned, is that DOT will, once we, this is called like a punch list. You know, you just have to bring them up to their standard and once we do that, which is what this is all about, then it's theirs in perpetuity.
And we had to do this work anyway.
We'd have to do this work or, or keep maintaining them and they could, they're only going to get worse and the costs are only going to go up.
Is there, is there any opinion as to whether this would be a, a more feasible expense in the next budget year as opposed to the late in this budget year? Can we wait until the next fiscal year so that we can include it in a budget? Because it's a hundred and twenty-some?
Hundred sixty-three.
Do you have an opinion one way or the other?
I would, since we've already gone through the bidding process and, you know, it could only get worse, I would just assume do it now and get it off our books.
And you have a problem with erosion too, that it needs to be corrected because the water's going to get worse. Wash that road out.
There is ones, there, there's some pictures in there that shows the, it's getting really close to the road. Like it, I don't think, that section probably should not be waited on. More weather, more rain, more freezing, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I think I'm motion to approve.
All in favor? Ask the seat.
Thank you, Lord.
Mr. Adams, you're back up.
Yes, ma'am.
Eight point three, consideration of memorandum agreement for North Carolina Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Yes, ma'am.
Elevate three homes.
Uh, the board may be aware that after Hurricane Florence, there were several hundred applications received by residents of Pender County for this Hazard Mitigation Grant Program or H M G P. As I'm sure the board is also aware, there's generally a finite amount of money and tends to be seemingly an infinite need for that money. So not everybody who submitted an application was awarded funding through the Hurricane Florence project. And so North Carolina Emergency Management was able to review the applications for folks who did not, uh, receive funding for Hurricane Florence and move some of those applications to a different H M G P project. So this project is associated with Hurricane Dorian. H M G P Dorian, the board may remember that was a storm that, um, thankfully scooted past. Right. Uh, in twenty nineteen scooted past Pender, didn't, didn't have much of an impact on us. Uh, but the request is to enter into a memorandum of agreement with North Carolina Emergency Management so that they can be in the implementation of this grant to elevate three homes in Pender County.
What is that gonna call Pender County?
It will not call Pender County anything, forgive me, I always forget to leave with that.
All right. Any questions, concerns? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second? All in favor? All right. Eight point four, amendment to cooperative, for cooperative agreement between Pender and uh, North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resilience Strategic Buyout. Where are we on that? How many houses have closed?
Good question, and, and just a point before I get into it, this is a separate buyout program from the uh, H M G P buyout program. Um, but I, there is a representative from INCOR with us today, Maggie Botiglin, and she can provide some information on that. I'll, I'll defer to the board if you'd like to hear from her first and then we can talk about this amendment to the cooperative agreement.
However you want to.
Okay. We, we, we'll just go ahead and talk about the amendment to the cooperative agreement. Um, essentially, uh, the strategic buyout program that INCOR is operating, which as I mentioned is separate from the H M G P program, is, has identified two areas of the county, one along northeast Cape Fear River near Bergall, and then one along the Black River in Curry, where they're doing targeted buyouts. So these are very flood prone property. And so only folks who own property within those two specific areas are eligible for this buyout program. Now, gentlemen, has reached out to folks with INCOR about ha- having his property added to this program. And INCOR is willing to, uh, certainly consider that request, but wanted to bring it before the board through this amendment process through the cooperative agreement that the county and INCOR have previously agreed to. Uh, so it's two additional properties that, uh, INCOR would facilitate the buyout of. This comes at no cost to the county other than we would receive the deed to the property um, and it would be de-restricted in perpetuity not to be built on. I will be happy to turn it over to Maggie, who may be able to provide more detail. Yes, ma'am.
That INCOR buyout program, that permanently takes that property out of our tax rolls.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is there a limitation? Is it, does it have to have a home on it? Is there a restriction on the amount of acres that can be bought out? Is it the home plus acreage or just the home and the side of the system?
Good question. I will defer those questions to Maggie.
Good afternoon. Uh, to answer your question, ma'am, our eligibility criteria are pretty broad, so we do favor personal primary residences. Uh, but if somebody has vacant land, we will accept those as applications as well. If the property is over five acres, we do consult with the local government to ensure that, you know, we're not burdening the local government yet with their, with their.
That's nice.
Um, I'm happy to, to discuss more about this specific, uh, these two properties or provide an update on the program if you all would like.
Anything we can do to help our citizens? We just don't want to get hogwowed taking land out of, out of, uh, our tax rolls because that's right. Just do our little minds. All right. Any questions, comments? Is that all you have, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Any comments or questions? All right. Do I have a motion in support of this, uh, resolu-, uh, this agreement, cooperative agreement?
I make a motion to approve the amendment to the cooperative agreement between Pender County and North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resilience regarding this strategic buyout program.
Second? All in favor? Uh, resolution in support of the N C D O T's application for the U S Department of Transportation Bridge Investment Program for Cape Fear Memorial Bridge replacement.
Yes, ma'am. As, as the board may be aware, uh, there's been a challenge in, in replacing the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. The North Carolina Department of Transportation is seeking grant funding through the U S Department of Transportation uh, for funding to replace that bridge. Uh, the W M P O staff notified us of this, of this grant application and asked for a letter of support from the board.
It's a very high dollar project to replace that bridge.
Any questions, concerns? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second? All in favor? Keep that in the thousands, ma'am.
Knock on wood. It's like Vegas, walk away, right?
Don't say anything else now.
I, I believe I have one more item as a discussion.
You do. F P O twenty fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan Priority Project List. I'm sorry.
No problem. Yes, ma'am, the, the W M P O has been working on updating their Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
Please, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, if you could restrain yourself, if you have comments or conversations, please take them outside.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so the, the W M P O is working on updating their Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is sort of their guiding document or the region's guiding document related to transportation improvement projects. So as part of that process, undertaking that process, they've conducted a substantial amount of public outreach, soliciting feedback from members of the community about priority projects or priority transportation projects uh, throughout the W M P O jurisdiction, which includes New Hanover County and parts of Pender and parts of Brunswick. So, uh, the public engagement component of that project is winding down. They have an online survey that will close on November thirtieth, so I would encourage uh, for all the folks listening in the audience to visit the W M P O website, it's W M P O dot org, and consider taking that survey. Staff reached out, W M P O staff reached out to, to county staff and wanted to get some feedback from county officials about supplementing any, any feedback that they've received from the public. Are there any priority projects that you all have in mind that they may want to consider as part of this twenty fifty M T P plan?
Widing duty.
That is one of the, yes, ma'am. Thankfully, uh, we recently adopted a bicycle and pedestrian plan. The board adopted that at their October sixteenth meeting. So that helped inform some of the bicycle and pedestrian priorities that staff has put together on a preliminary basis. Some of the roadway priorities do include projects that have been identified through either studies that have been conducted by D O T or by consultants of the county or adopted plans at the county level, such as our Pender County Collector's Street Plan. So I have a list here of projects and I'd be happy to pass those around to the board. But some of the roadway projects do include uh, widening two ten as well as replacing some of the bridges on two ten that flooded, specifically at Harrison Creek and Merrick's Creek. Those two places flooded pretty severely during Hurricane Florence, trying to make that road more resilient. Additionally, some of, some of the intersection improvements, uh, in seventeen, on seventeen, on Highway seventeen and in Hampstead as a result of the Hampstead bypass and some of the expected traffic at some of those intersections. And additionally, at Blueberry Road, some improvements to Blueberry Road as well, or some things that staff identified.
On Blueberry Road on four twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am. So really, this, it's not anything, um, for the board to vote on and it's, it's not anything that I need an answer from you at this meeting. Just wanted to get it in front of the board as an opportunity to provide some feedback. The, the list is due back to W M P O by the first of December. Um, so, you know, if something comes to mind over the next week or so, please feel free to, to reach out and let me know.
What about that roundabout rerouting of, um, Fifty Thirty through downtown Bergall?
That is not within the W M P O's boundary. Yes, ma'am.
Within the municipal.
Well, so the W M P O boundary, think of it, it runs, um, sort of along two ten and then up to seventeen just south of Surf City. So that would be something that we might identify in a different transportation plan.
Any other questions, comments?
As I say, I know the traffic light on Highway one seventeen, Ashton, they have been approved for construction. And if you're low, we hope you get one there or haven't been approved yet, honestly.
Right. Yes, sir, I do know D O T is working on that project based on that rec, um, presentation they gave to the board. And we're in pretty regular contact with the Division Three team at D O T, so we'll be happy to keep the board updated on the-
It was a little stereo, that two, one seventeen, all of that, yes.
Yes, sir.
I got so much time, I go down out forty now, it's just, it's always a wreck somewhere or something, I don't know, running to you. People trying to pass on that road, you can't pass.
That's right. Yes, sir. In D O T, I will say they, um, frequently remind us that safety is their top priority. So just to echo that, send it to the board.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
On the stand, we have ten point two Parks and Rec Board Appointment.
Um, so Raymond Rosso has applied for the Parks and Rec Board for District Four. This is a position I have been advertising for the entirety of my time here and then some. Um, he seems highly qualified for the position. I have attached his application. Uh, he has been on the Parks and Rec Board in Wallace for twenty years. He's coached various sports as well as umpire for baseball and softball.
So we wait and we get a really good candidate.
Yeah?
All right. So, um, do I have a motion since that is my district that I can't make motions? Would someone make a motion to approve this gentleman for me?
I make a motion that we approve Raymond Rosso to be on the Parks and Recreation, um, Board for District Four.
She's very, very well off. I'll second.
He said his responsibilities were small, grandkids. All right, all in favor? All right. Will you send a letter to Mr. Rosso?
Yes, ma'am.
And ten point two, reappointment to the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority with Norwood Blanchard.
Norwood Blanchard currently serves on the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority as a citizen representative and is requesting reappointment, as was also mentioned at our last meeting. Um, their term expires on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. So we're gonna go ahead and put on the agenda, um, just to make sure that if the board wants to reappoint him, his term will just continue after instead of any lap.
Norwood's done a real good job, I think, when I'm board, he's former county commissioner. Very big with it.
With issues. And he, he's currently the chair of the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer, and, uh, serve with him and, and very helpful.
Um, I do need to note that he technically has served either three years, three terms or ten years. So should the board want to reappoint him, he does have to, when you reappoint him, you will have to, um, bypass the rule thirty-two of our rules of procedure.
They're limited to quite ten years.
Uh, so, yeah, so we have a ten-year, three-term limit set out in the rules of procedure, it's rule thirty-two, uh, section C. Um, we'd have to bypass that in our motion, your motion, whoever motions.
We're gonna do that today?
Yes, if you wanted to reappoint him. Okay, thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Uh, second, are we doing the motion to-
Stand, rule thirty-two?
Okay. So we'll have two different motions. All right, all in favor? Now for the reappointment of Norwood Blanchard to the Lower Cape Fear, uh, Water and Sewer Board. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Board, approval.
Do I have a second? All in favor? So at this time, do we need to open for the Maple Hill, Rocky Point, Scottsdale, Morris Creek, Central Pender Water and Sewer District? Do we need to open for the Pender County Board of Health, Ms. Moser? I knew you were here, I just can't see you. All right. Social Services Board? Uh, okay. Uh, do we have, um, sign-ups for public comments?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Uh, Debbie Walker?
My name is Debbie Walker and I live on Union Chapel Road. And I came to speak about the Maples Corner intersection. Just Saturday, I was there at the intersection. The vehicles are not stopping, not even with the red light. I've been at that intersection twice and coming from, when they're coming from Bergall, they jump that intersection, never stop. Only by the grace of God that accidents, more accidents have not happened there. And I was there at that same spot. I'm, I'm almost afraid even go to Maples Corner. It's that bad. So something really, really, and the school is there and our children is there. I'm a, I'm appalled that nothing has been done about it before now with the school right there. Children are our future. And our children is very important to me and I hope that they're very important to the board, the state, anybody who has say so and what's going to be done with that intersection. But it needs to be done right away. It is very dangerous. I live there, I see it on a daily basis. You all might not see it. And if you pull the camera from the store, you'll see what's happening at that intersection. And I, I hope that you take it very seriously and that something is done as soon as possible about that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Manager, maybe we could get the sheriff to work with us to get a camera out there or, and get the tag number for everybody running that stop sign there at the school.
I believe the sheriff is here.
He's gone. I look for him, that's why. I was gonna get him and play in all that. Thank you, Ms. Walker. We do, we do share your concern, truly, we do.
Are people blind, can't see a white man?
They're texting, they're texting. And they're looking down at that thing, that's probably the biggest part of it. Uh, anyone else?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, members of the Christian District, a couple of reminders this week. Uh, the county offices will be closed Wednesday through Friday for the Thanksgiving holidays. The county Christmas party will be December eighth, uh, from eleven-thirty to two. And also, if she's still here, and I believe she is, I wanted to, uh, make sure that we thank Tammy Proctor for her service to the Pender County Tourism Department. She'll be starting with the top full chamber on December- She'll be starting with the topical chamber on December the first, so.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done, Tammy.
We'll get a picture of you for the paper.
Just ask.
Anything else, sir?
No, ma'am.
Uh... Anything for you?
Um, just, uh, some items for closed session. Item three, attorney-client privilege. Item four, uh, economic development, and item six, personnel.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner George?
Just have a couple of things. Thursday, uh, got the opportunity to share my afternoon with the Girl Scout troop of forty-two, forty-one in Rocky Point. And that was an interesting learning experience, uh, the, the see, see children that age to have questions, the same questions we have, the same concerns. Uh, was concerns about traffic. This one girl stood in the curry, and she was talking about people running the stop sign in her neighborhood, that she couldn't even ride her bike anymore. So those concerns go all the way down to adolescents. So I thought it was really interesting to hear those kids talk. The next thing I have is daily now, I receive, and I'm sure Wendy does too, complaints about Carolina water system over in Hampstead. And my understanding is that we have no authority over Carolina water system at the county. And I refer them to the, uh, North Carolina Utilities Commission. And so the day they sent me the information of what it takes to file a complaint with the North Carolina Utilities Commission, and I wanna, it appears to me, just from reading this, that it's done this way to discourage regular citizens from filing a complaint against, uh... So here's just a couple of highlights of what you have to do. You have to use black ink or white paper, type complaint, and print the com, the complaint on computer, on the computer. That is legible and acceptable and capable of being copied. The document should be double-spaced if possible, number each paragraph, and be signed, be sure to sign the complaint with ink and date it. The complaint, it has to be notarized. And then you have to send the original copy along with fifteen additional copies to the commission in a, an envelope, and it cannot be faxed or emailed. So you have to, fifteen copies, you have to send fifteen copies to Utilities Commission for filing a complaint against water that the people are, are, can't drink. I mean, I've seen, it's been on, on local news, um, now that chlorine is so bad that people are having, getting actually chlorine sickness. They, it has been tested, and it rates high, but they claim that they left the, um, flush valve, flush chemical alone too long, and so now they're telling everybody just to flush their water. But it's a continuous thing, I just want people to know that. I feel their sympathy, but there's nothing as a county, as far as my knowledge, that we have control over the Carolina water system.
We do not, that's the Utilities Commission would, would govern them. Um, and we, in the past, um, I think they were seeking a rate change, and the commissioners did send, uh, a letter of opposition to that rate change, but that's different than just the everyday operations that the, and the Utility Commission has. And eight, the Utility Commission has authority over, uh, regulating utility, but not, um, the county does not in terms of, of what they're doing.
Could the county enact a resolution to send to the Utilities Commission?
Certainly.
And we get one drafted, so we can get that heard?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would, I think, come under Mr. President's, um...
Well, and Madam Chair, board members, we can do more than that. Um, the county can file a complaint itself and be a party to the case. Um, we could take this matter up in closed session on, uh, December fourth. I'll do a little background research and report to the board in closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege, uh, prosecute a few complaints and, uh, staff complaint cases, so, uh, I think that's something we can handle.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
That would be wonderful, I'm sure people would be glad to hear that. Are you on that water system, Wendy, are you part of that now? It's majority of Old Point and Belvedere and all the new developments we've allowed in between the two.
Definitely Belvedere. I mean, those people that are paying ten thousand dollars on the water system, just to be able to drink.
Yeah, the ma, the main complaints now come from the newer subdivisions of Emerald Forest, um, and Solberg, which are new subdivision.
Thank you for bringing that to us.
I have a few things, I like, as a veteran, I like to thank the Pender County chapter of the martyrs of the American Revolution, the Morris Creek Bridge chapter with a Veterans Day celebration at the Bergall Trinity. But very well attended this year, and I'm really proud of that, uh, ceremony, and made all the veterans proud. Also, I'd like to say, Chair, and I just want to attend to the, uh, meeting of the KPRPO Rural Transportation Advisory Committee. Discussion today, one of the things we discussed was the long-range planning and pollutant issues. Now, I've heard more recently about the Bergall bypass, and unfortunately, that was, they were almost ready to start disruption on the Bergall bypass in the nineties. But people were arguing about location, exactly where it was going, so the, the town, uh, they gave up on that. It's unfortunate, because we really need that now. There are, um, they're gonna come back now and put a, um, a long-range study plan on that, of which will be ten, twenty years, whatever anything happens. Even though I know it's Bergall, there's laws that something new Bergall, and it's just taking the life of your hands, and when, it's not a real concern. So if you're involved, see what we can do, get back on page, and see what we can come back with, and, and, so fortunately, that was happening. So we had to move on, do what we can do now. So, Chair, involved in the Bergall bypass.
I wonder if there's a roundabout, and people.
Yeah, they were talking about, yeah, they are still looking at that roundabout, but it helped some, you know, but.
And speaking of roundabout, there had been DOT that proposed putting a roundabout beyond the Mappus Corner. The, the last time it came on their radar, uh, DOT proposed going to the end of the four lane and putting a roundabout in there to slow traffic. And it was posed to the community, and the community voted it down, so we'll see what they come up with after this year and a half study. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Rose?
Uh, the biggest conversation I had this week was with a family that split their farm up, and now they're paying all the other additives on their tax bill rather than paying one. They're paying fire EMS and specials four times where they were paying it one time because they split it up to the family members. So that's kinda disheartening that, disheartening that that happens, just because you split your hand up. But that's one conversation I had, and the next one was about Mappus Corner intersection. Um, it's almost a call every day now about the Mappus Corner intersection, and, um, I hope we can get something done there.
You're right, I can study on this, so I would get it done quick.
Anything else, Commissioner Rose?
That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Um, I have received a lot of the emails in regard to, um, the DOT wanting to put the stoplight at Hilltop on the east side. Um, that, that was approved, um, but one thing I've tried to explain to people is that, um, we have other intersections that are ten times worse than that intersection. And Brad and I both have, um, sent requests to the DOT to investigate these other, um, intersections where they have no light. And, and it's like suicide, trying to cross one side of seventeen to get to the other side of seventeen. So we went back and identified, um, I don't know, Brad, what, twelve?
Yeah, somewhere.
Ten or twelve different places that needed to be studied and needed to be looked at before we made a decision, um, in where to put that stoplight. I totally understand that, yes, the DOT approved it, but we felt like that more studies needed to be done on other severe intersections where there was nothing there. Um, it's taking a chance every time you try to cross the road or cross four lanes of traffic. Um, but I have received all those concerns, um, we, we are taking all that into consideration. We're just waiting on the DOT now to get back with us.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. So, um, uh, to attended the veterans ceremony in Bergall, and I, I just wanted to mention, uh, that the Bergall Baptist Church did such a beautiful job. They had their choir there, and they sang, um, the song for every branch of the military, and it was so touching. I was in tears, these fellows standing, ladies standing up, singing their, their, the, the song associated with their branch of service. It was really very touching, very well attended. So, um, with nothing further.
Madam Chair, I could, I forgot one thing. December first at Hampstead Quonis Park, the Parks and Rec Park will be lighting the Christmas tree. December first at five-thirty, five-thirty to seven, at Hampstead Quonis Park. Every year it's grown, um, attendance-wise, and every year up to this year, the tree grown. This year, um, it's fun time, it's quick, easy, kids love it.
The tree lighting is always good. Remember when they used to have that tree, I was overwhelmed, we turned on the, oh, that was the best. All right, um, so do I have a motion to go into closed session for items three, four, and six?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session for item number three, attorney-client privilege. Item number four, economic development, and item six, personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming, look forward to seeing you next time.
We're out of closed session. Now, we are on twenty-one point one, by the way. We're sorry that our meeting ended there. So, um.
Mr. Moran wasn't available this evening. He had a personal matter he had to attend to, so I'll be filling in on the presentation for him. So, the first item on the agenda is a general use rezoning of about a hundred and sixty-five acres. So, the case number is rezoned twenty-two-three dash fifty-five. The Planning and Community Development Department or staff is the applicant, and Pender County owns this property. Requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone two parcels that total about a hundred and sixty-five acres from the Residential Performance Zoning District to the Office and Institutional Zoning District. You can see on the vicinity map on the screen that the subject property is between Highway seventeen and the future Hampstead Bypass. So, it's about a mile and a half from Highway seventeen, about three-quarters of a mile from the Hampstead Bypass. So, it's predominantly one large parcel, and then there's a smaller triangular-shaped parcel right there. The zoning map on the screen shows that the property is currently zoned RP, or Residential Performance, to the east, to the west, and to the north, predominantly Residential Performance zoning as well. Further south is a lower-density Residential Zoning District RA, or Rural Agricultural. Directly across the street, property was approved for a conditional zoning district for Oton RV Storage. That's the GB CD four district. Then further east towards seventeen, there's some general business zoning districts. The aerial map is intended to show the board what the property looks like today. It's an undeveloped track, heavily wooded. Most of the uses around the track are lower-density residential uses. Again, this is a general use rezoning, so there's no site-specific development plan. So, the board has to consider all uses that are allowable by right or by special use permit in the Office and Institutional Zoning District. An example of a residential use that's allowed by right is upper-story residential. An example of some non-residential uses that are allowed by right would be a school or a hospital. And then there are roughly thirteen uses that are allowed in the O and I district with a special use permit. On the right-hand side of the screen are the setbacks for the O and I district. So, we do have traffic data for this site. The data is from twenty-twenty-one. That's the most recent available data that we have. So, the volume-to-capacity ratio is a number, a figure, that we use to determine what the roadway capacity is based on the volume of traffic, the daily traffic at this site. So, based on those twenty-twenty-one numbers, you can see the volume-to-capacity ratio is point four-eight. So, there's ten thousand trips per day, and the road is designed to hold roughly twenty thousand nine hundred and forty trips per day. So, there is capacity on this road based on these data here, which admittedly are a couple of years old. The next slide is the future land use map for the property. The future land use designation for these properties, I should say, is medium-density residential. And I'll read just a couple of lines from the future land use plan about the medium-density residential, future land use category. This category is located in close proximity to supporting services and a mixture of development types, and is generally found in the southern portion of the county. Appropriate uses include single-family residences, duplexes, townhomes, community recreation, and open-space uses, as well as neighborhood-scale institutional uses, such as religious and civic organizations. So, staff's evaluation of this proposal is that we found it was consistent with four policies in the future land use plan. Those are policies five-point-one C, five-point-one D, five-point-one K, and five-point-one L. Staff also found that these policies and the future land use plan encourage and support the deciding, development of commercial, office, and institutional uses that are positioned in this area of the county to support the growing residential population on the eastern side of the county. So, this case was heard at the October third planning board meeting, and the planning board unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning proposal. So, that wraps up staff's presentation. The last slide is just a statement that the planning, or excuse me, that the Board of Commissioners may consider using when making a motion, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right, thank you, staff. Do we have any questions, staff?
This is the proposed school, K eight school site, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, we have a case sign-up.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Derwood Potter. I live at one-eighty-four Berry Patch Road. There are five households on Berry Patch Road, three of which border the proposed school property. We are generally very much in favor of the school. However, we're very concerned about what's going to happen to the traffic. It's pretty bad now. In the morning, it sometimes takes a couple of minutes to make a right, and it might take up to ten minutes to make a left. As you know, that part of the county has grown substantially. Our concern is that when the school does go in, between the school buses and the parents dropping off children, we're going to be locked in for a while. And it's not just Berry Patch Road. If you look on the map, there are a number of roads, Holiday Drive, and others that go back into communities. Their only way out is onto two-ten. I know the county has nothing to do with the streets or the roads per se, but we would hope that you would work hand-in-hand with the state to make sure that we don't get basically bound in, that the situation's mitigated so that it's not impossible for us to get out during certain times of the week, certain times of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That was the only sign-up, Madam Chair.
So, Mr. Adams, the most likely there will be, have to be a traffic study done for improvements there, I would assume.
Yes, sir. So, the, when this site is prepared to be developed, an application will be submitted, and that will likely require a traffic impact analysis. So, there'll be coordination with the WMPO and DOT in review of that analysis, and in that analysis, the results of it will inform potential roadway improvements.
So, we got stoplight at Highway seventeen, a country clothes, tops of high school. Also, I've dealt with school construction before, there's always the push for what they call stacking of off-highway cars. So, I know we don't have a site plan yet, but I would assume that the school district or how they're, they're planning where they have plenty of stacking capability to get the cars, parents, and buses off of two-ten.
Yes, sir. We've had just preliminary conversations with the school system and their team, and that has been a heavy point of conversation.
And then also, we're, they're doing the traffic study on Highway two-ten for possible improvements from there to I forty, correct?
There is, so there's actually two studies going on right now. There's a resiliency analysis, which we'll be bringing before the board at the next meeting. That's looking to how we can make that roadway more resilient. There's also a feasibility study that DOT is doing separately, and that's more looking at the safety of the road.
When you say resiliency, are you talking about subject to flooding?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the DOT, they presented a step study that they were doing at their, the meeting they had in August. So, I grew up for eighteen years on Holiday Hills Drive, was, now Holiday Drive, was Holiday Hills Drive. So, I'm quite familiar with that curve, and it was nowhere near the traffic then, twenty years ago there is now. So, I understand the concerns there. So, hopefully, the, between the DOT and the school stacking, we'll be able to get those cars off of two-ten, where you don't get trapped in, Whispering Pines don't get trapped in, Holly don't get trapped in.
Yes, sir.
I feel like DOT have plenty of time to work these off, now. I mean, it's gonna be, a lot of planning in.
Madam Chair, I have no other questions.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Good.
So, chances are we'll probably get a turn lane and a signal and a lot of other stuff to ease that congestion that results from the school buses and the six-thirty to eight-thirty congestion.
Now, what's always fun about those is the school system has to pay for all those improvements that the DOT requires.
Yes, so there's actually, yeah, DOT has a team that specifically reviews, you know, traffic impact analysis for schools, so.
All right.
Let me, this, we can't depend on DOT to get this traffic from not stacking up on the road. We're gonna depend, depend on that man back there to get these cars on school property and stack them even if he has to double lane them, and get them off of two-ten. That's what they're gonna do. Ain't that right?
Are you talking about Mike Taylor? I'll call you right on out, won't I?
Even if we have to fill in some of that swamp.
So, any other comments, questions? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to deny? It is on page nine of the files, and it's right in front of you.
I can't see that. Making a motion to approve the zoning map amendment to make, make a finding that the proposal is consistent with the Pender two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan. Said approval is reasonable and in public interest and fulfills the goals of the Pender County two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan because it is consistent with the following policies as noted in the staff report. Five-one C, five-one D, five-one K, and five-one L.
Do I second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is a recap of the joint meeting that we had with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board. Really, staff just wanted to take this opportunity to be sure we understood some of the key points from that meeting so that we can begin implementing some of the policies and priorities that both boards identified at that meeting. So, I'm gonna run through, there were four key topics or key takeaways. I'm just gonna go through those, and please feel free to ask questions at any time or interrupt me along the way. So, the first topic was overlay districts. That was something that the board has talked about a lot, both the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners. And before, you know, before we discuss the details, I think we all need to have a baseline understanding of what an overlay district is. A common thread that you'll find throughout this presentation is that a lot of these things are tools for you as the decision-makers of the local government to make more informed decisions. So, an overlay district is a tool that can be used by local governments to add provisions in a certain area. This would be in addition to any requirements of the base zoning district. What is the purpose of an overlay district in Pender County? It certainly would help establish a means to differentiate between development regulation in different areas of the county. So, for example, if the board wanted to have a overlay district that requires sidewalks along Highway seventeen, an overlay district could be established along seventeen that would require whoever develops property, regardless of the zoning district, whether it's general business, residential performance, planned development, to install a sidewalk on their property foundation. Now, that might not be necessary, say, in Curry, where there's lower-density development or where there's mostly agricultural uses of land. So, the overlay district would allow us to require, would allow us to have the tools, the tools in our tool belt to establish regulation development in different areas of the county. From an implementation perspective, what are the next steps in establishing an overlay district? Well, first, we need to understand what the community priorities are, right? So, pretty substantial amount of public engagement would initiate this process. And then, based on feedback from public engagement as well as elected and appointed officials, we could establish what those priorities are and begin implementation of some of those overlay districts. Now, a key point here is potentially seek the assistance of a consultant, right? There's always a, you know, a benefit of bringing on someone who has some third-party advice, maybe offer recommendations on what has worked well in other locations that are similar to Pender County, and what has not worked well in other locations similar to Pender County. So, those are just some, some things that staff is considering. I'll take a pause here if there are any questions about overlay districts from the board before I move on to the next topic.
So, it says in addition to the requirements of the base zoning, so the base zoning will stay the same?
That's, yes, sir. That's right. So, if the property is zoned, general business, right, we may mandate that you have a certain number of accesses to the We may mandate that you have a certain number of accesses to the site. Um, just by adding an overlay district, we're not changing that requirement. We're just adding an additional requirement that's only specific to, to parameters of that overlay district.
You can be more restrictive in an overlay district.
Yes, ma'am.
But it doesn't change the, the basic.
Right. That's right.
For example, you could restrict high-density or multiple-family, uh, units, like apartments, from a residential or commercial area.
Certainly, there, there are ways to, to restrict various types of uses. The second topic is conditional zoning. And again, this is a tool that can be used by local governments to make more informed decisions about developments. So, um, what the board heard just a few minutes ago was a general use rezoning. There was no site-specific development plan. The board had to consider all those uses that were allowed by right or by special use permit in the office and institutional district. So, in the conditional zoning process, a site-specific development plan has to be brought forth so the board can consider the spatial relationship of what is being proposed and the uses that are being proposed. And they also have the opportunity to add reasonable and appropriate conditions that offset the impacts of that development. An example here would be if a, a large-scale commercial development was proposed next to a residential community. The board might say, uh, there needs to be a, a stronger buffer between this commercial development and the residential community. Or maybe the residential community has concerns about stormwater. So, the board may say, you need to design your stormwater system to exceed the standards as outlined in the county's UDO. So, it gives flexibility to the board to, to offset the impacts of the development through conditions of approval while also having a, a very specific understanding of what is being proposed. So, again, a tool for the board to make a more informed decision about development.
So, the conditions would only apply to that parcel and not be expanded as would a special use to the other surrounding, like, parcels?
It would just include whatever, however many parcels are within the conditional zoning district. Yes, ma'am. And again, the implementation process, this is something that staff can, can really begin immediately. We can begin recommending to applicants that they move forward with a conditional rezoning rather than a general use rezoning. There are certain instances where it may make sense to, to have a general use rezoning, say, a, a small piece of property on seventeen, rezoning from residential to commercial. Um, that's a, that's a frequent flyer before this board. So, small uses like that may make sense.
Talking with the planning board, they seem to prefer the conditional zoning. And they've started implementing a lot more that, I would say.
Yes, ma'am. Indeed. And, and staff has begun recommending folks go that route. Any questions before I move on? So, the third topic was the Plan Development District or PD District. This is a mixed-use district where the planning board acts as the administrator when reviewing master plans. So, it's a little bit complicated. The planning board basically acts as staff and makes an administrative decision. An administrative decision meaning there are objective standards that a developer must meet, and if they check those boxes, they're entitled to their permit.
If they are objective and not subjective.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not gonna be arguing, arguing about how curvy are the streets, right?
Indeed. So, that's, that's, that's the challenge of the PD District, right? That's, that's not really an objective standard. So, it sets up, it creates an environment of, uh, really an unfair environment for everybody involved in the development process, from the planning board to staff to the developer to the neighbors. Because the developer sees that they have an administrative approval, check the boxes, objective, yes or no? Do you have the required number of parking spaces, yes or no? This case goes to the planning board to review, and the planning board understands that this is an administrative review. It's a yes or no, black and white. You meet the standards or you do not. The public often doesn't understand that. So, they come to these meetings and voice their concerns about these proposals to the planning board, and the planning board has no real authority to, to do anything about the concerns that the public shares. So, every party involved really has a, I don't know if unfair is the right word, but just not a, a very good process. It's a process that can be improved. And so, the, the purpose of the change would take that decision-making authority away from the planning board, potentially, and move it, shift it to the Board of Commissioners, depending on the process. Shift it to the Board of Commissioners or shift it to staff. Right. So, it's an administrative approval. That's what staff is for. When it's an objective standard, check the box. You have the right number of parking spots, yes. That's what staff is for. So, shifting that approval process either to something that goes before the Board of Commissioners or before staff is, is more of an objective process. And again, how can we implement this? We can reevaluate the process by which master plans are approved in the PD District. So, this is gonna, you know, take some time, and there's, this is more complex. There's a lot of ripple effect for any change that may occur in the PD District because there's a lot of, um, large land holdings on the eastern side of the county that are zoned PD. Um, so, this is something that will take staff some time to evaluate, and we may, uh, consult with, say, the Cape Fear Council of Governments or, um, other resources to evaluate what our best proposal is moving forward. Any questions about the PD District? So, the last topic is special use permits. And Mr. Buffkin did a really nice job of presenting to the board the challenges of special use permits and how you are required to act in a quasi-judicial manner, meaning you are basically assigned to, uh, act as a judge, an impartial decision maker, and consider only the facts presented through testimony by experts. Again, this is a tool, removing special use permits from, from the board's consideration would allow for greater discretion in the decision-making process. So, rather than what Mr. Buffkin had discussed with the board was moving special use permits to the Board of Adjustment for their review, the, the subsequent topic of conversation was, why don't we just get rid of special use permits? And that's something that a lot of local governments in the area and across the state are, are moving away from, right? It puts the board in a bad position where you cannot do what Mr. Buffkin says. Inherently, your role is to do is to advocate for your constituents, and it ties your hands in the decision-making process. So, staff can evaluate some of the uses in the UDO that are allowed via special use permit, and we can bring forward a text amendment to remove some of those uses. Any questions about the special use permit process? There were a few other topics of discussion. I would be remiss if I didn't mention them. Resiliency, stormwater, and tree preservation. Those are all things that we discussed at this meeting. Uh, just want the board to know we hadn't forgotten about these things. Uh, staff is diligently working to, to improve some of our standards in, in these areas. Um, and you'll likely be seeing chan, be seeing changes in the near future. Um, but I, I wanna take a moment to pause and get any feedback from the board, if you have it. And if not, um, you know, staff will begin working on implementing some of these changes and improving our processes. And this isn't an item for you to delay on.
When, when a developer wants to clearcut a large tract.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are they allowed to mitigate the trees?
They're required to mitigate the trees.
And how, what is the mitigation?
Two to one. For every one significant tree they cut down, they have to replant two.
What is significant tree?
There are a handful of trees that are determined to be significant. So, there's, uh, American holly, um, live oak, water oak, and...
Just that oak.
Yes, dogwood. Those are the four significant trees. And then, there's a handful of other significant trees that are based on size. So, if the circumference or the caliper measurement of the tree is in excess of twelve inches, there are a handful of other trees prescribed in the UDO that are deemed significant.
How do we enforce that?
We require a significant tree survey as part of a development proposal. And I would just note to the board that, um, residentially zoned properties, so property in the RA and RP zoning district are exempt from that requirement. This is only applicable in the Plan Development District or our commercial and industrial districts.
So, if every tree you cut down, you gotta plant two?
Only if they're significant. So, pine trees, for example, are, are, you know, not significant. So, there's no replanting requirement. Or not significant is deemed by our UDO.
You said they're all significant.
Yes. Qualify, qualify that statement. Yes, sir.
So, why is RA and RP exempt?
I don't know that I have a great answer for that question. Um...
Not when you go clearco them.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I have a great answer for that question. I would imagine, um, you know, think of a residential development. There's often, uh, open spaces as required a part of that development, but some of those trees could be replanted on individual property owner's parcels. And then, once that property is turned over to an individual owner, um, if they choose to cut that tree down, it could present, you know, enforcement challenges for the county. I don't know that that's the reason why, but that may have been the line of thinking when that rule was written.
So, counties have a tree ordinance where you have to get permission to cut down a tree?
Oh, yes, sir. Definitely.
So, on, on PD and, and business, commercial, they're two to one. They're required to plant them back. Are they required to make sure they live?
There is a requirement in the ordinance, um, regarding, uh, maintenance of significant trees. And if they, if they die or fail to, to grow, um, then there is a, a obligation to replant.
Who does that obligation fall to?
The developer, the owner of the...
Developer goes back to Texas as soon as he's done the development.
Right. And often, it's a challenge to enforce. Um, if there's a storm and a tree falls down, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, the first thing our code enforcement staff does is, is not go back to the site plan that was approved five years prior and look and see if that was a significant tree and as to whether or not that was needing to be replanted. Now, that's something that we can improve our processes on, but it's hard for us to keep track of when a tree falls or has died unless someone complains about it and we become aware of it.
So, so, this may be off of this a little bit, but I'm asking the question while you're here.
Sure.
So, if, if a developer gets a permit, he gets approved for, uh, the planning department approves his project, and it says no on-street parking, you gotta plant so many trees, you gotta provide sidewalks, um... Is that a complaint-driven thing if that doesn't happen to, like our rest of our enforcement? Or we, do we go back and check up on developers after they start their project?
Oh, definitely. They wouldn't get a certificate of occupancy if they didn't have all those things in place. So, I, just, just to be clear, the way our process works is we issue them a permit, and then we do final inspections or inspections along the way to ensure what was permitted is being installed as according to plans and as was permitted. So, they wouldn't, you know, if there was, uh, too few trees planted or if a sidewalk wasn't as long as it should have been or wasn't as wide as it should have been, they wouldn't get a certificate of occupancy to operate.
So, you're working on all these forms?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
PD, you're gonna really, all right? I mean, where we have some, somebody can have some say about what actually happens.
That's the goal. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's kinda heartbreaking to watch some of these meetings where there's nothing, everybody's hands are tied because of the way our orders is written and the, and the plans are written. It's, your orders is what you wanna do with it, pretty much is what we seem to do a lot of times. I think that's it.
Okay.
For me.
Thank you.
And, no problem. And I'm always happy to answer any questions should the board have them. Please feel free to reach out as his staff. I know y'all are familiar with Justin. We did have a new, uh, member join the team. This is Tucker, Chair. Just wanted to introduce him to the board while I had the opportunity.
Welcome, Jerry.
So, I wanna say this publicly. I told Daniel this the other night. I seem to give Daniel our time a lot. I don't mean to give him our time, and I appreciate all that he does. And I realize that, um, I know you, it probably feels like I'm giving you our time.
Oh, you say that now.
He's just, he's doing what, you know, he's doing what he was instructed to do and what, what the board up here has directed him to do. It's not his fault that he has to do some things that might not be popular with me or the general public or the developers as a whole. But I do appreciate you and your staff. I'm gonna make that, set that out loud.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and, you know, because there's so many times that there's different arguments to be made, coming at it from different perspectives. And so, we here, and then we come back, and you guys have to defend yourself. So, um, we just wanna make sure we have a robust conversation.
Yes, ma'am. Indeed. And we're always happy to pick up the phone, uh, if you all call and have any questions.
Do you always address my people? Think dumb or not? I think that's...
You're a great resource. Help with your questions around...
You gotta hurt someone's ass anyway. What you learn, isn't it?
Help push it. All right. Anything else?
So, then that's it.
So, at this time, I would like to, uh, have a motion, uh, to amend to add a resolution, uh, on our agenda for hearing. Uh, do I have a motion to, um, for a resolution authorizing sale of a hundred and seventy-two acres in Pender Commerce Park?
Making a motion to put that up.
All in favor? All right. So, uh, we've added the motion. Now, do I have a motion on, uh, passing a resolution authorizing the sale of a hundred and seventy-two acres in Pender Commerce Park by upset bid process?
Do I need to read the motion or a resolution, or does it just...
I don't think we need to read the resolutions of this.
I'll make a motion to approve the motion to, you got my copies. I can't remember what you said.
I'm gonna add the sale of a hundred and seventy-two acres.
A hundred and seventy-two acres in Pender Commerce Park.
By upset bid process.
By upset bid process.
All right. All in favor? So, also, there is another item we need to address.
And Madam Chair, the board would just authorize staff to execute the documentation for that. That's all we need.
And we have, uh, in hand, a resolution.
Pardon?
We have in hand a resolution.
They're not a, a formal resolution.
Okay.
But, I mean, again, under settlements, if the board is approved, us agree that settlement.
Are you talking about the next, the next...
We're not here yet. We're, we're still on the, um, the contract.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
So, um, so do we need to, a motion to have staff prepare a resolution? We just passed a resolution.
No, no, I'm sorry. I, I was, I was...
He was, uh, kept his doors.
So, now, um, I would like a motion, um, to add a, is it a resolution or that we opt in?
Uh, it can, yeah, just opt in and have the, the consent.
Do I have a motion to opt in to the settlement with Kimours and DuPont?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right. So, we have added it. Now, do I have a motion to approve, uh, Pender County opting in to the settlement of, uh, Kimours and DuPont, um...
I'll make a motion for Pender County to opt in to the settlement.
With Kimours and DuPont. So, all right. All in favor? So, let's carry that. So, um, this needs to be done by December fourth. So, it has to be done by December fourth. So, whatever needs to happen, if the board has to take action, we need to know about it as soon as possible. All right. I would like, I would like to be told when that, uh, matter has been... when that matter has been concluded. So, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Succulent.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you so much.